Good evening. Today is Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 PM. And I'll call this Fairfield Township Board of Trustees Special Meeting to Order. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Birding.
Present.
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Here.
Trustee McAbby.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone here tonight. At this time, I move to open the public hearing for a permissive motor vehicle license tax hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll?
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbby.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. And if anyone has, would like to speak this evening on behalf of this topic, I wish you would please stand and raise your hand, and our law director will swear you in so that you can testify. Thank you.
Okay.
Either one.
This is for the testifying at the public hearing tonight, yes. Okay. So, do you, so I'll make sure that the testimony that you're about to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. So we do have sign-ups for both. I'm assuming we just go off of both because they may have signed the other paper. So would you like to go over what the topic is first?
Good evening. So the purpose of today's hearing is to present the proposal for an additional $5 permissive motor vehicle tax. We will explain our current funding challenges, and we're going to outline how additional funds will be used, and we will gather community feedback. So right now, the way our roads are funded, so our current funding sources are through the road and bridge property taxes, which is a property tax that you guys pay on your properties that you own. We have a motor vehicle license tax, so that's when you go to the BMV and you register your vehicles. There is a gas tax, so we get townships, or I'm sorry, the state charges 38.5 cents, and the townships get 5% of that total gas tax, but they split it across 1,308 townships, and we only get a certain percentage based on our road mileage. And then there's the county permissive motor vehicle license tax. So we get 30% of the current fees that are being charged. Right now, in Fairfield Township, there's a $15 permissive fee, but it's not through the township, that is all through the county. So out of that $15, we only get $4.50. We also fund road improvements through the residential incentive districts, which is an improvement district that was put on, I can't remember when you guys put it on. But we get certain property taxes from that in the total, I think it's about $330,000 a year. But with the rising costs, these are not enough to cover long-term infrastructure needs. So, under the Ohio Revised Code 4504.181, it allows townships to levy an additional $5 license plate fee per registered vehicle. It applies to the unincorporated areas only, which is Fairfield Township. Fairfield Township currently does not collect this tax. We would propose enacting this tax to directly support roadway infrastructure. So, current revenue versus potential. So, in 2024, last year, we collected $73,980.18, which was 30% share of the county's $15 tax. The proposed tax would be $5. We estimate that it could potentially bring in about $250,000 based on that 30% share. We would retain 100% of this new tax, and so the revenue per vehicle would rise from $4.50 to $9.50. Here's our budget shortfalls in a nutshell, so all of those funds that I just explained. So, we're talking, in 2026, we estimate we'll bring in $1.09 million. We will expend $1.28, so we're about $190,000 in the hole. And then you can see as it goes down, what I did is I projected a 3% increase in revenues and about an 8% increase in expenditures just because of the rising costs. So by 2030, you can see that will be up to almost $530,000 in the hole. Township infrastructure, so currently Fairfield Township has 81 miles of roadway that we have to maintain. We have the third-largest road inventory in all of Butler County. We have deferred paving and stormwater projects repeatedly over the last couple of years because we do not have a dedicated funding source to pave for road paving, or stormwater projects, or curb and gutter replacement. How the funds will be used, it's, technically, they're all capital funds. We technically can't use three of them for personnel costs. We use the road and bridge fund for personnel costs, but all of the other funds are strictly capital-only. So that means they can pay for asphalt, salt, gravel, coal patch, curb and gutter replacement, storm pipe and jetting systems, road signs, landscaping utilities, public works tools, equipment, and vehicles, and they can pay for contracted services such as paving and repairs. What this means for you, so if enacted a $5 fee per vehicle in the unincorporated areas, it will be added during your annual vehicle registration. So whenever your birthdays roll around and you go to register your vehicles, that's when you would pay the additional $5 tax. So, just for Fairfield Township, it would be $9.50 if we enacted it, but every dollar would stay in the township. Community benefits, so we would have safe and smoother roads, faster stormwater response, we would replace our aging infrastructure, we would be reducing long-term repair costs, and we'd have a better quality of life and property values for all of you. So we want your feedback. Obviously, you either support it or you don't. Are there any road or stormwater concerns? Or do you have suggestions for priority projects? Or do you have suggestions otherwise where you might be able to get the money? So, that's all I have.
Okay. We'll have a chance, you'll have a chance when you go to speak. Okay, sure. We'll call, we'll call you. Sure. Okay, any comments from the board before we go to?
Yeah, can we go back? Go back one more. So, can you break down a little bit on what, why are these costs going up? Can you explain that? What's the driver of the?
It's just, it's rising costs of everything. Rising costs of asphalt, rising cost of gravel, rising cost of coal patch, everything. You name it, it's increased.
Okay, and can you outline, are these, what are these? So if we're going to be doing paving, what are the, what are the projections for paving?
So this does not include paving. So that, we don't have a dedicated funding source for paving, so this is just strictly salaries and benefits for the public works employees and all the costs associated with the public works department. So it does not include paving.
And do we strictly have to maintain the level of staffing that we currently have? Are there any cost reductions, or are there things that you can do in order to change those, or is this just a flattery?
This is just budget projections, so yeah, obviously, any budget cuts that we would make, it would obviously reduce that, that number.
And then if we go forward, please? One more? Actually, it was sort of in the presentation, but that's okay. I think that we have, I think that something that would be good for people to know is some of the projects that we have completed, because it's not like we haven't done anything. So I think that, going back a little bit further, we, we did, we have been very diligent, our public works department has been very diligent on doing curb and gutter repairs, the things that they, it's not like we haven't done anything the whole time, and we've definitely done quite a bit over the years. So it's something that would probably be good to, in this presentation, some of the things that we have accomplished.
Okay.
Trustee McAbby?
What, what other choices do we have for revenue? I mean, we could, we could.
Road levy.
I was going to say, we can put half a mil on, quarter mil on, it would raise about the same amount of money. That would be on the property owners and not the car registration. So those are really the two choices we have. To have a dedicated stream, to pave your roads, work on your roads, clean your roads with snow, do the things that we have been doing for years. You know, which, which way do we do it? More property taxes, or the people that drive on the roads actually pay the extra $5 to cover some of the costs? Is $5 the maximum?
Yes.
Can't do 10?
Oh, we can do two, we can do up to two.
Do two, five, or 10?
Yeah, right.
Which would double the numbers as far as projections go.
Right.
That's all I have.
I'll hold my comments until the end. Any other comments? Forwarded public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. So, we have quite a few people that have signed up, and some have signed up for the special meeting, but I'll go through the public hearing first, and then I'll start reading names off of the special being list. And if you wish to speak about this topic, then at that time, you can come up to the podium, the microphone. And if I don't call your name and you wanted to sign up, I'll, I'll open the floor for anybody else that would like to speak after that, and you can come up to the podium at that time. Okay, so the first person that signed up was Maria Tangi. And the public comments will be limited to three minutes, because we have a lot of people that want to speak, and I'll just keep the time for everyone, and I'll just kind of give you heads up when, I'll kind of raise my hand when the time is up, and then.
Name, address, you know the procedure.
Yeah. I'm fluent at this. My name is Maria Tangi, I'm 1891 Harvard Street. I have a couple of questions about the paving. So all of this money that we'll be getting from this would go for paving only, not to go towards the payment of employees? Is that what I'm understanding? Like, it'll go towards the road fixtures?
Yeah, like any capital improvements, which would include all of that list that I listed earlier.
Yeah, okay. And do we have any income coming from Butler County to help fix the roads? No? Okay. Not anymore?
Not anymore.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I think that's probably a good question that we need to, that we need to take to the commissioners, to see if they have any plans of doing that, because there have been several years where they have given money to Fairfield Township for paving. I don't know if that's something that they would entertain this year or not, but I think that that's a question that we should ask.
And then, do you have an estimate number of motor vehicles that are in the township that you'll be getting the money from, like, that you know?
I thought I did the quick and dirty math, and it was like 16,000, because if you, we roughly have about 8,000 houses, and if you take two to three cars per house, just based on the 30, or the 97, what did I say, 97,000 that we get, or 73,000, if you do the math, divided by $4.50, it's about 16,000 cars.
Okay.
But it is an estimate, we don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's fair. I mean, my neighbor has three or four vehicles, and I have one, so there's.
Yeah.
And does that include motor homes and other, anything that you're registering?
Yep, anything.
And, just to make sure, because I know that there's some money needed for building things out around here, and none of this is going to be used to like build the firehouse or anything like that?
No, ma'am. So, the, the nice thing about township fund accounting is whatever you, whatever the use is, it has to be spent on that use. So all of those funds that I just mentioned previously, those are all public works funds, and they cannot be used for any other reason.
Okay. That was it? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and I'm sorry, I can't read this handwriting, but there's another Tangi. No, you do not want to speak, okay. She summed it all up for you, correct? Okay, Fairy Stroud?
Good evening, everyone.
Name and address for the record, please.
Fairy Stroud, 3800 Canal Road, Fairfield Township.
Okay.
Okay. What I want to know is, this all came about because you obviously think you need more money for the township. Why is it coming up now about needing this extra money for the township, when it was going pretty good the years before? So, you know, why are we coming up with this now? That's what I want to know.
I want to first say that for the last two years, we've gotten a lot of money from ARPA funds, which is from COVID money from the federal government, and that has paid for our paving for the last two years at a cost of about 1.3 million each year. And that ARPA money is gone now.
And what happened to it?
It went for paving, and it had to be spent by the end of the year, so it has been spent.
And we can't get any more from that?
No, the COVID money is gone. And we did get 300,000 a year, each year, from the county, from their COVID money, and they are out of, they're out of money too. It was required to be spent.
And do we know why Butler County is not helping us anymore?
Because.
I mean, I know you're going to check with the commissioner and stuff.
Yeah, well, the only time they ever helped us is when they had the extra ARPA money, and they helped every township. And so now that that's gone, they have never helped us in the past, until now. So, if they help us now, it would just be kindness, but they're, I mean, they weren't required to give us ARPA money either, but they wanted to disperse it out within their townships and their cities. They give it to the cities and the townships in Butler County for paving.
Okay. So how does this actually work? I'm not good on politics, thank goodness, but, how does this actually work? If you decide that this is going to pass, do you guys just vote on it? Do you put it on the ballots for November?
It gets, it gets voted on. So the trustees would vote on it, they would have to enact it before the end of June, and then as long as we send the paperwork to the Director of Transportation before July 1st, then it gets put on their, you know, whatever processes they use in their applications, it would go to them, and then they would start collecting January 1st of 2026.
Okay, so it's all decided right here in the township? It doesn't, it doesn't go on to November's ballot or anything like that?
Nope.
Okay, so the 1.0 million, whatever you was talking about on the property tax?
That would be.
That would be on the November? Okay.
Well, we're talking, what we're really talking about, and my question was to let everybody know, we only have two choices. A $5 or $10 fee on the license plate for a car, or to put, put it on the ballot and let people vote on mileage on the property taxes.
Well, you may have those two choices, but right now, your choice, because you're the ones deciding it, you have to go on the $5, you would be the one deciding that. If you put it on the November ballot, that would definitely probably be voted down. So, those, to me, that you've got the one choice, because the other one would probably be voted down, I would, I would imagine.
And we don't have any way of knowing that. What we do know is we're getting a lot less money in, and the cost of paving your streets and mine are escalating at unbelievable rates. So we have, we have a choice. You know, we can accumulate an estimated 250,000 a year, try to keep pace with paving, which is curb and gutter and then paving, or get behind. When I got elected a long, long time ago, we were behind, we worked diligently to get caught up, and, and we're, and we're pretty caught up now. I mean, there's, I hear people complaining all the time about the streets, and I'm like, well, we spent a million dollars this year, we got to find another million before we can spend some more. And this is one way, it's been brought up, the county has mentioned it to us in the past, that you don't, you don't enact that extra $5. Well, we, we didn't, because we really didn't need it, and now, if we ever needed it, we need it now, going forward. But I hear what you're saying.
So, this actually, you said you had a choice of $2, $5, $10?
It's. Yeah, the legislature lets you go up to 25 for our community. The county already has 15 on, and the township is permitted to do 2 $5. So we could technically take it up to 25 if we, if they voted to do that.
So, what is Hamilton paying? Do we know what, what Hamilton pays on that?
I, wait, I do have that.
Because I don't think they're paying as much.
I think we're the cheapest car registration in the county.
Oh, I do too.
I think we are, and that's, and part of it is the $5.
That's why we all like to live in the township.
So, Hamilton is 25. Fairfield Township, Morgan Township, and Riley Township are all at 15. Everybody else is at 20, except for Milford is at 25, Ross is at 25. So, Hamilton's at 25, Middletown's at 20. Let's see, Trenton's at 25, Oxford's at 20. So yeah, we're one of the lower ones.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because I, you know, when we register, go to get our tags, we make sure they know it's the township, so, that we're in the township, so that we're not paying that extra, because, you know, Hamilton shows up.
And if they're not paying it, we're not getting it. Right.
That's the point.
But there are, your neighbors, you see your neighbors driving around with California plates or your, some other plates, they're not paying anything.
Right.
And the DMV wants you to update all that within 30 days, so tell your neighbors to go, go get that Ohio plate.
Hey, that's up to everything else. Maybe they're not going to stay here, who knows? Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, the next person that signed up is Mary Alcorn. Decline? Okay. So, on the other list is Barbara Holland. Do you want to speak at this topic?
Concerned with the patients.
Oh, sure, okay. Come on up and state your name and address.
We'll see if we agree with you.
My name is Barbara Holland, I live at 6921 Morris Road in the township. I have been here since 1980. My question is, and I've brought this up before, I know you all go over to Culvers in the Fifth Third Bank. I don't cook. I travel that road a lot. I went over there yesterday, and there was a hole big enough that I could have lost a small child in. I brought this up before, Detective Lanier told me it was being, taken care of, checked on, whatever. I haven't seen anything done with it. If they throw gravel in the hole, look, I'm 80 years old, I walk with a cane, I could have filled them holes better than what they are.
I'm sorry, is that the access road behind?
It's the only way you can get to Fifth Third Bank.
Okay.
And it's a mess.
My Culvers and that?
And I understand that we don't own it.
It's private property, so we can't do anything to it.
I understand that, but we can get somebody in there to fix that and then charge them for it. It's a dangerous road to be on. You got to go on the other lane to go right-hand, it's crazy. And trust me, I'm on it a lot. And you have to go opposite, it's not safe, okay? It needs to be fixed. My other question, I also go to Cane's, I live over here, I have to turn a left to come out of Cane's. That's a dangerous turn. You can't see coming up that hill facing towards you. They need to put a left turn light up there. Lanier is the one that told me that they were checking on, and I see nothing going on with that either. I go straight down, go around a block to come up to keep from getting hit.
Go through that same road with the big pot on it again?
No, I'll go around a block down by Dollar General, go around, and come out and go straight on Princeton, and then make my turn to come home. Both of them are dangerous spots, they need to be looked into. I'm an old woman, and I can get cranky about this, but I just wanted to bring it up, it does concern the paving, I think it needs to be taken care of, those holes get worse every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
That was headed south down onto, onto Gilmore, you want a left-hand turn light.
When you come out of Cane's, you got to turn the left, come home. You can't see coming up the hill. It's dangerous. I got to sit there and be on the other line. Go straight, go right, I won't go, I won't. And I'm sure I'm not going while you see the fog and the bad light.
Okay, our next person is Martin Meyer. Is that, did I say that right?
Yep, my name is Martin Meyer, 3729 Reva Ridge in the township. Been here since 1980, or so, or so. Let me tell you, despite what our illustrious lady behind me is talking about road condition, I lived in Hamilton County most of my life. Our roads are great. Our roads are great. I mean, you go down any of the roads, when you, when you cross the Hamilton County line, you really got to pay attention because you're going to tear your car up. Anyway, I'm concerned about hiding taxes. And this looks like another hider. So, if you can't get it through the property tax, I guess you got to have to do it. But I'm not in favor of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Charles and Cindy Kirkpatrick?
Nice to meet you, I'm Charles Kirkpatrick, 6753 Weston Court in Township in Weathered Oaks. Several concerns, or several questions, whatever. I see the replacing aging infrastructure. What infrastructure are you looking at? I mean, if it's not going to be used for buildings or anything, we really have no bridges. We've got a lot of culverts, you know, that goes under, I don't consider them bridges if you put a culvert in and a blacktop over top of it, but, you know, I don't see a lot in the township. As for the roads, you've got county roads, you've got state roads, and they maintain those, right? What are you talking about for the township? What does the township cover?
The township covers all the subdivision streets, and it covers some collector roads. Like, so what Barb mentioned earlier about Princeton Road from the bypass to the Dead End, that would be a township road. So when we are responsible for maintenance, we're responsible for all of it. So that means any stormwater improvements, any curb and gutter, pipe replacement, it's all included, the paving too.
Is the new building going on in the township? Has that been considered?
New building construction, we get a little bit of percentage of an increase in property taxes, but not that much. Maybe 1%.
You don't get the same thing you do from the people that's been here?
No.
My, my concern is, you know, aging people that's on fixed income, on retirement or whatever, you know, the property taxes keep going up. You pay for a house, you get it paid off, then you lose it because you can't pay your property taxes. That's a little, you know, you work for a long time to get that, and then, you know, I understand everything goes up, but not retirement. You know, so when we look at that, we either got to move out of the township, or sell our liver, I guess, I don't know. There's one other thing that I forgot. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morris Road is one of our main roads, I call it Main Street, you know, it's got the three sections, and it's not cheap to maintain either. And look at all the traffic that goes on it. So, and we're always replacing those culvert pipes, they crack or break, so we're in there, we have to replace those that are on our streets. But you're right, the county's got a number of streets, and the state has some streets, roads, but like one of the earlier slides said, 81 miles of township roads. That, that's a lot. So, you know, if you did, if you did five miles a year, it would take you how long to get them all done? And, and it would take a long time and a lot of money. So that's our goal, is to try to continue to work on them and, and not get so bad, but then all of a sudden, something happens, and we have to spend some money somewhere else too, a pipe will break, that type of thing.
Mrs. Kirkpatrick, would you like to speak? Decline, okay. Well, Maria, you spoke once, do you want to speak again? You signed up on the other sheet as well? Okay, let me call everybody else first, okay? All right, thank you. There is a Steve and Heather Guggenberger? Decline? Okay. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter that didn't sign up? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, did I, oh, is it Mr. Gray? Rodney Gray? I apologize. Rodney Gray. I, I apologize.
I like your accent all the time.
Well, you're high by Mr. Wheeler there, so I didn't see ya. Well, come on up. Sorry about that. I apologize.
First of all, thank you for letting me have the time to do this. Uh, I'm not here to give you any answers on what y'all need. I'm 66 years old. I've lived in the township since, oh, Rodney Gray, 5763, you're in Crest Drive Township. Uh, I've lived in township my whole life. I remember when the township was self-supported. Only residents, some farmland, no businesses. We supported two fire companies, police department, road crew, just on property taxes. I remember five mom-and-pop stores just in Belmont. I know that because I lived there. I remember them, okay? I know because, yeah, I was raised there. Tyresville Road, Don's Coal Welding, that was it. About a third of people today was about the population. Now, there's probably two to three times as many people. Princeton Road is full of businesses. Bridgewater Falls, Walmart, Home Depot, Menards Urgent Care, several strip malls with restaurants, gas stations. Other business has to be bringing in other types of revenue. All the new subdivisions being built, there's gotta be some kind of revenue coming in from that, okay? I don't understand how back when we had no other, uh, revenue, the township was actually in better financially. There are people who live on a fixed income, myself included. We depend on every dime we get to make do. Now, you're wanting us to basically charge us rent on our vehicles, you know, to live here. To me, it's a mismanagement of funds. You know, someone needs to take a look at the spending and clean it up. I, I do have a couple of questions. Do we have a road crew?
Yes.
What do they do? I, I mean, I'm in the township all the time. I never see them doing anything. Nothing. The only time I ever see them is when there's a foot of snow on the ground or they're cutting grass over here somewhere. I mean, we just, uh, the, excuse me. The subdivision I live in, they just went down and done curb service, curb replacement, right? And they outsourced it. I mean, thousands of dollars that was. Okay, we've got a road crew. If you don't have somebody that knows how to do concrete, did you ever consider hiring somebody that knows how to do concrete and put them on the road crew for stuff like that to save us money? I'm just throwing it out there, you know? And, like I say, you know, it's, it's just boggling to me. You know, you drive up Princeton Road, you see all this business going on. And back in the day, there wasn't nothing. And it just kind of gets my wheels spinning a little bit, like, what's going on? You know, that's, that's basically all I got. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, you, you remember when, uh, there was no stoplight at Morrison and Princeton then?
There was no stoplight, had a stoplight.
And, and right, and the, and more, uh, Princeton and the bypass, there was a blinking light. Remember that?
I remember it was built. Lot of wrecking. What they done, what they done with the bypass, that's probably saved a lot of lives. I'm not gonna argue that. It actually made you think you turned illegal, which, anyway.
You're being recorded.
Well, I can get away with it.
We're almost, we're almost through paying for the improvements to the bypass.
I can believe that.
All those businesses down through there, all of that money, almost all that money, a lot of that money has gone to pay for things like that. Wideen the bypass, widen Princeton Road. And, and again, we're almost done paying.
Well, let me ask you a question. You're talking about repaving all these streets and everything like that, right? Some of them probably do need it. Subdivision I live in, I don't know when the last time it was paid, but the roads are still good. Are you gonna go into those subdivisions, even when there's no speed bump, potholes, chuck holes or anything like that? Rip all that up, resurface? Or are you going after just the roads that actually need it?
Right, we're gonna do Morris Road two or three times before we get some of those cul, cul-de-sac roads deep in the, deep in the neighborhoods. Because, because of the amount of traffic, the amount of wear and that kind of thing. Tugley Road's another one. Those are expensive roads to maintain, and we're only doing roads that need to be done. And you probably remember this. We, we had a, a project for several years we went through and cut out those cracks and tried to detach them, and then we did the gravel thing. We did all that to try to save them and get a few more years out of them. And in some places it worked and some places it didn't.
Right, depends on the traffic.
Right, depends on the traffic and how good the job was done.
Okay, since you've thrown Tugley Road out, I mean, interrupt you.
That's right.
Lot of truck traffic on that road. The road wasn't built to handle that kind of weight. I'm a retired diesel mechanic. I know what trucks and roads weigh. Is there any way to detour them around? Okay, there is a way. Keep them off the road. If they're just going to bypass, uh, Stems Road coming the back way that way, well, that's where pretty much all that truck traffic goes in. On the bottom side of Tugley Road. If you're considering anything like that.
I don't, I don't know legally whether we can keep them from driving on Tugley Road or not. We'd like to keep them from driving on Portson Morris, uh, Road and Vintage Road. You know, all of those streets where we get those, those trucks in. We've had that conversation in the past. I don't know, Kim, is, is there something legally we could?
I don't think we can. Well, Vintage Road is posted, no trucks, and we have part of-
It's not hard to ask, I mean, you know.
Right.
Stop thinking-
We can ask again.
You're talking all this, this big money for asphalt and everything. I get it. Cost of limits went up, you know, but, you know, our salary goes up too. But somehow or another, it don't even out. So, it's one of those situations, okay, we gotta do what's best for us. You know, the business is construction. You're driving through the township, depending on Fairfield or City of Hamilton, correct? So, there ought to be something to reroute or something, portable roads, check the road, make our roads last longer. I mean, they're doing-
We can, we can ask again and see if there is something we can do to keep them off the road. Because it's, it's disturbing to me, because I go through the, the roundabout. Roundabout, and you know, you see those guys coming down there, and there's a sign there that says, "You can't turn on Tyresville." So, you gotta go out there and make some. But we can ask again.
But just one other thing. I always pretty good at identifying somebody who's concrete work, put on the road crew.
The way you can do it yourself. They're getting paid to work, put them to work.
And we just lost-
Somebody's getting rich out there, and it ain't us.
And, you know, concrete, that's another one. It's just-
It's high dollar.
It's just, it's amazing what we pay for concrete.
Right, absolutely. I agree with that, but, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm on a fixed income. Several people here, several people in township. I got five vehicles to register. That's my prerogative. I worked hard for that, you know? And it just, something's kind of hinky here. Don't know what it is. I just need to find some way to save money and, and if there's a way to put some of the projects off to get the money built back up, you know, if there's a way to do that. It don't hurt to put things on hold here a little bit, you know? Times gotta get better. I mean, it can't get no worse, but gotta do what's best. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray. Okay, I think, um, we had a question in front. Did you want to come up and ask your question at that microphone and state your name and address? No?
You need to get sworn in if you didn't.
Yeah. But, I'm sorry, before you do that, anybody else that didn't get sworn in that wants to speak? Thank you very much. And if you could, uh, state your name and address.
Absolutely. It's Judy Tipton. I live at 4115 Schroder Drive in the township, down the street and around the corner from Shannon.
Good neighborhood.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of questions on this. For one, do we have any bridges in the township? I'm not aware of any bridges that we have.
No, the bridges are covered under the county. So, county, so every jurisdiction has a different authority that they're responsible for. Townships are responsible for township road maintenance. So, bridges all fall under the county's purview. It's just part of the legislation says that you can pay and use those funds for those purposes, but the township would not use it for those purposes.
We don't actually have, okay. That's what I was thinking. That's why I was surprised to see that on there. Um, another thing I have a question about is, I know that, um, Mr. McCaby had suggested there was only two ways to do this. But, um, as Chuck knows, we have a lot of businesses that are going on on Stewart Road with a lot of storage. They're, they're buying up that farmland and building it. Why can't, and those are all trucks that are going out of there, heavy trucks. And they don't mind that limit about, don't go on vintage. You should see them try to go around the roundabout, because I've seen them going over the roundabout. Um, can't we apply some type of tax to those semis that are using that road constantly to help some of this?
If they're, if those vehicles are registered in Fairfield Township, then this tax would apply to that.
But they're not.
But they would have to be registered at that location. But if they're like, a, the parent company is in another state, a lot of times, all, they'll, they'll register all their vehicles in the other state.
Is there a way to add, because I know we're giving them a tax abatement, right? Chuck, those businesses there on Stewart, is there any way to add something to that, that would pay for all of those semis?
Nope.
Okay.
This is, this is like Joe said, this is, these are our only two options that are given to townships.
Yeah, as far as subdivisions and stuff, our roads are in really good shape. I mean, I'm like the gentleman here, because I worked in Hamilton County for 31 years, and you're right, they were terrible. And, and, and I was on a bus, like you can imagine in a car. But, I mean, our roads are really in good shape. And I'm like with Mr. Gray, you know, I'm retired. I've spent 58 of my 62 years in Fairfield Township. I remember when we had a constable instead of a police department. How about that? And, I mean, I was a kid, they had constables. But anyway, everything's going up for the taxpayers. And I know you're tired of hearing this, but property taxes, I know that had nothing to do with you. All that was the state. But it makes it pretty unaffordable, especially when you retire early and you didn't plan on retiring early. And to have this, and I only have one vehicle, but still, that's not the point. I know Hamilton does this. I know they have for years. But this is a lot to expect people all of a sudden springing on and say, "Oh, well, here, by the way, we're gonna do this because we need all this road improvements." But the roads I drive on, they don't need improvement, except for my street because of people that built $2 million house behind me, and they tore up the road for them. But, I mean, that's because, you know, whatever. But it's, it's not, that's not fixed. There's little lines on it all over, but all the other roads I drive on are good.
Right, well, just keep in mind too, it's also for road maintenance. So, that would include salt, de-icer, if we would have to put gravel down, crack sealer. I mean, it's all of the above. It's not just asphalt.
Okay, and, and our crew does a phenomenal job on that. They really and truly do. I'm so grateful to them, because they really are out there. I, I see them early in the morning and everything. But who does our pavement now? Who, who do we contract with to do the pavement?
Uh, we actually go through Butler County, so Butler County will contract out, they will bid out all of the paving for all of the townships that want to participate.
Okay.
So, this year, I can't remember who the contract went to, can't remember if it was Jurgensen. So, Jurgensen won the bid for all of the townships that participated, and we, like I said, we participate with Butler County.
For this year, so Butler County does that for us?
Yes, and they manage all of our projects and they take care of all that, so we don't have to do that kind of work. I don't think we pay them a fee, right? They just do it for us for free.
The county does do that. We could do that ourselves, but it, it's a better option to have the county do that for us. They don't. The other good news about the paving this year is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did, uh, put in what we thought would be about a million dollars in paving, and it ended up coming in at 800,000. So, that helped us out quite a bit. So, it did not cost as much as we had planned, so a little bit of a savings there this year.
So, that's what the hope is, is that you, the more quantity that you put in there, the more the, the cost will come down. Plus, if you put the bid out as early as you can, if you get early on the, on their schedules, then they will tend to bid it lower, because once they start to get stacked up, then the price goes up. So, the earlier the better, the more the better.
And, and if this $5 goes through, you could increase it to 10, like, the following year if you wanted to?
Oh, yeah, the trustees have that ability to do that, but they only have the option to do two.
So, they could start out at 5 and then go up to 10 if they wanted to the following year?
We would have to do another public hearing and another, like, what we're doing now.
Okay. All right, well, um, is there, I mean, have you guys thought, is there any subdivisions that are coming into Fairfield Township?
Yes, so we have two subdivisions that are on here on Route 4. They're not included in that 81 miles yet. So, they've not been accepted, so once they get accepted, then we will also have to assume maintenance for all those new subdivisions.
That's the ones by the Bob Evans, the Ryan Homes?
Well, not that one, but I think, uh, Timber Hill and, yeah. The Walden Springs one is a private, private development.
Is, is there any thought to maybe adding a, a tax to the builders to, to recoup some of this?
Unfortunately, townships are creatures of statute. So, statute in Ohio says that we only have two options. We have permissive motor vehicle tax and road levy. That's it.
Okay, that's the only two choices, or the state law, is what you're saying? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Deb Meyer, 3729 Weaver Ridge Drive. So, the last conversation brought up a question, which, so those, that's all we have. We can't take any of their suggestions on how to decrease pricing, get better labor, put a concrete guy on the road crew? We can't do any of those things? These are great suggestions for people to, to come in. I, I came to complain about the tax. We live in a place, we moved here because the taxes were less, but they're catching up really fast. And if you gotta do it, I guess making it in the license thing is the way to do it, because at least it is distributed between everybody who uses the road instead of just the property taxes. I mean, if you own land property, then you get to pay it 14 times. So, I know they're complaining about the tax, but I thought that these people came with great ideas. And unfortunately, if you stand up and have a good idea, you usually get in charge of that committee. It's the guy who looks down at the floor. But, so we can't even do those things because those are our two options?
Unfortunately, yes, but we do have really talented people on our public works crew, and they do do a lot of the stuff in-house. They do. It's just, I think, with the quantities of concrete that we can get, we can get, usually get a better price if we farm it out versus doing it ourselves. I know that sounds weird, but...
Plus, while they would be doing the concrete work, other vital things that they do would not be getting done, like mowing the grass, cleaning up litter. Other things that their public works department does on a daily basis would not be getting done. And so, they would have to then come back another time or overtime or whatever to get that done. So, it is the most efficient way for us to do it, because it's such a large quantity of, of, um, concrete that we're doing. We get really good, and then we go out for three bids, we get the best bid. And for many years, we had someone that was doing it for pretty cheap. Unfortunately, he retired, and our costs for the same amount of curb and gutter has really more than doubled. And, um, it's just-
Because he gave you a good price or because the world doubled it?
Well, a little bit of both. A little bit of both. But, I mean, everything is more expensive since 2020. It just costs, especially materials have gone up so much. And that's part of the reason that we got into this predicament, is because while we were growing at a steady, managed pace, the cost of goods and services have gone up. And we have tried to maintain a, a balanced budget. But it's, it's been very difficult to manage the high ri, high cost of materials that are needed, when we're not, we don't have any way of generating more income. So, we don't collect an income tax. So, all the businesses that have doctors and they have workers in these buildings, they're not paying an income tax to Fairfield Township like they would the City of Hamilton or the City of Fairfield, which would help bring in some of that. So, we are limited being the township on how we are, we are able to generate revenue to, to balance our costs.
So, when we first saw this notice about the taxes going on there, our first comment was, "They want $5 later, and they want $10 later." And gosh, we show up at the meeting and they're already talking about $10 later. Can you go to the state and get that changed? Let's just say the state doesn't change that. Once you take the 10 bucks, and now it's gonna get, can be 15, and all that, everybody changes it. I mean, there just has to be another answer. I, I just feel like having those two answers- Um, I, I just feel like having those two answers to raise money is just not viable because you're right, half of the people in this room are on a fixed income because that's what age we are. But our taxes and everything continue to go up, the property taxes. I, I, I'm just disgusted that it's a good place to live, but we're losing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I actually think there, there is another option. So we've heard about the option of doing the five dollars. There's the option of putting some, a levy, a ballot measure. There's also the option of doing nothing and not collecting this and choosing not to do this. Now, one of the things that this might look like is, is it might decrease the amount of paving that we could do on an annual basis. So um, over the last ten, twelve years or so, we started, we have increased, there's been years when we've had more money for paving and we have put more money for paving. Um, the last few years especially, we have put a lot more money towards paving. And I think, um, our administrator, uh, I asked her to pull together some of the numbers on that, I'm sure she will. Um, that kind of shows what we have put towards paving because the intent was to get our paving caught up because there were a lot of streets that were in pretty bad shape. Um, our roads department has also, and that's sort of a, we, we need to do a look back to say, okay, how much have we been spending on paving? On average, and I think since I've been here, it's ranged anywhere from, I wanna say like three hundred thousand to maybe eight hundred thousand, give or take. So that's about what we spend per year. And again, some of these years, we put in a couple hun, a couple extra hundred thousand dollars in that so that we could get caught up with some of the roads that were bad. Um, if we choose not to do this five dollars, if we choose not to put a levy on the ballot for this, we would have to ask ourselves and say, okay. Instead of putting eight hundred thousand dollars for paving, maybe we only put four hundred thousand dollars on paving. Okay. Maybe we only put three hundred thousand, but we look at, we would say, okay, this is what we have. This is what we're gonna be using this year. Are we gonna completely not do any paving? No. But we would need to take a look at that. And so looking forward, a good step would be, and I've talked to the administrator about this and I think that she can afford or amendable to this, is, is looking at what should our paving plan be per year? And, um, our public work supervisor, Jeff Bennett, um, regularly goes out, he looks at the roads, he makes the recommendation for paving and he says, okay, these are the roads that really need paved this year. These ones can wait a couple of years. And, um, he does that on an annual basis and he updates that and uses that to make the recommendations. So the third choice would be is we say, okay, we know there's issues, but we can only spend three hundred thousand this year, or we can only spend four hundred thousand dollars this year. And I think that's kind of the decisions that, that we would have to make. So we can either use what we have, do the five dollars, or do the levy.
And to add on to that comment, um, if we, if a road does need to be paid, but we postpone it for a year, the cost of paving that road may increase by as much as twenty percent the next year. So if we were, it's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars to do that road, it could be sixty thousand dollars next year to do that road. Cause just the, just the cost of things going up, we don't have any control over those.
Well, maybe, but this year we put in for a million dollars and it only ended up costing us eight hundred thousand. So and I will say on behalf of, um, Greg Wilkins, the county engineer, he's very, very well aware of that and he purposefully moved a paving schedule and has been asking the townships and everyone to get it to him earlier so that he could be more proactive and so that we could get those better rates than waiting till the end when everybody was booked up. So we do try. I mean, the county does try. We, everybody has the best of intentions here and we're trying to work with what we have in a difficult situation.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Maria, did you wanna speak one more? Please come back up to the microphone so it can be recorded, please. Thank you.
I just, for the lady who was talking about that side road, can we just create a nuisance for the owner of that property and then make them fix it?
We, we're in communication with them. It is a consistent, ongoing problem. They put Band-Aids, terrible, terrible Band-Aids on it, uh, year after year. And we were trying to press on them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, oh, okay, that's for that. And then people, everybody's saying your roads are great, but mine are not. I live over on the knob and I have big holes and divots and, and I have sewers that are clogging from, you know, um, trees growing in them. So I know that I need pavers, you know, paving, paving and infrastructure done on our neighborhood and maybe some speed bumps because we have speeders. But, um, and then the last thing about this is, you said, how many people did you say, properties do we have in the township?
We have a little bit more than eight thousand.
Okay. Um, cause sixteen thousand, if we said two times five, it's still only eighty thousand. That's less than half of what you're saying you're missing. So how else will you find the money? I don't need an answer right now. That's all. Thank you.
We won't find the money. Um, we'll have to make cuts. And we'll all feel that, you know, if we make the cut. We've already lost a road crew person and we're not, we're not filling that spot. So we are trying to make some adjustments to what we're doing. But, um, if, if, if you don't wanna pay twenty-five dollars to have your street paved, you know, most of us is ten dollars, five dollars a car or something. You know, those are tough choices.
I'm just saying. Our roads are in good shape where we're at.
Yeah.
I know Belmont, the brother up, just concentrate on the roads and ask them.
Oh yeah, that's, that's what we're gonna do. And if we make a mistake on that, you let me know, but
I'll be in for it.
King Avenue, King Avenue has cost us a lot of money to try to fix the drainage issues up there and get it paid. Uh, the county has, uh, or maybe because they knew we budgeted a million, they came back to us and said, if we put in a grant through OKI, maybe we could get the west side of Princeton Road paid. You know, bypass all the way down to the city line. It's only a million dollars. And if we get the grant for eight hundred thousand, we have to find the rest in order to get it. Now, you would agree, that's a good investment if we put up two hundred thousand and got eight hundred thousand to do the job we're gonna have to do anyway. And if you ride it, you can see it, it's decaying as we speak. Uh, again, a lot of traffic, not all of it's ours. We can't charge all of them the five dollars. But those are the types of things we're, we're up against. New subdivisions, fire, policing, schools, they never pay the cost that they add to the bill. Never. And whether it's roads, whatever, they never do. It never has. So when you say, oh, you got new businesses coming in, new taxes coming in, well, a, almost all of our taxes, when a new house is built, you won't believe this, but your taxes really would go down if nothing else changed. But something does change. Your value goes up, that type of thing. So again, we're not, we're not, um, rolling in money like what we need to be able to address this issue. And this isn't our only issue. Roads are not our only issue. And, and if you pay attention over the next couple of years, you'll hear some more big numbers that we have to deal with.
Uh, can it, is it part of the roads? Or is it, is it related to the? Okay. Could you come back out to the microphone so it can be recorded, please?
What was your name again?
Rodney Gray.
Five seven six three Green Crest Drive. The, uh, chemical that road crews has been using in the past few years to spray the roads down before, you know, soldering, things add when there's a snow coming. Does that actually do damage to the asphalt? Is it, I mean, is that a possibility that the road is one of the reasons why the roads are screwing up?
I have, I'm the wrong person to ask it of. I'm, I'm the wrong person to ask. Jeff Bennett would be much more suited to answer that.
Okay.
I don't know. I would hope, I would hope that it doesn't. Kim might know.
Um, no, cause they use, they mix it with beet juice. So they'll mix it with beet juice and put the de-icer in it and it's safe for the roads.
Okay. So it don't affect the road?
No, it doesn't affect the road. What affects the road is it depends on the asphalt. Yeah, salt does decay it, but it also depends on the mixture that they use when they're getting it from the asphalt plant. So there are some companies like Jurgensen, maybe Barrett, I know uses a certain type of percentage of recycled materials.
Right.
So if you use the percentage of recycled materials versus it being virgin asphalt, it, it will not last as long.
Well, I understand that because I've done a lot of work on Jurgensen equipment and they're probably one of the best, probably one of the highest. But everything, all you see out here when they're milling up these roads, putting new asphalt down, that's going back to the plant and being re-recycled. It is recycled. I mean, if you had to pay for virgin asphalt, you'd probably talk twice a month.
It is. It's very expensive. I know that they had for a while, the, and I can't remember if it was in St. Clair Township, they were testing out new types of pavement where they were mixing it with glass and they were mixing it with different other recycled materials.
Old toilet bowls and everything.
Right. To try to see like which patches of asphalt would last the longest.
Right.
So I know that they're constantly trying to improve the process and then, you know, how many years we get out of it. I know like, um, in different parts of the township, we've used black mat before.
Right.
We put that down to try to prolong the life of the pavement before we get to pave it. But in some instances, we've used black mat, we've used black mat and we've never paved it. And I wanna say like the Belmont area was one of those areas that I don't believe has ever been paved. I think it's just been black mat.
Right.
And that's only a, a Band-Aid.
Right. Okay. Well, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, you're in the back.
Oh, sure. Would you please come up again to the microphone? Yes.
Charles Kirkpatrick again, six seven five three Weston Court. Uh, everybody's talking about the motor vehicle tax, but it looks like a license plate tax. So if you have a utility trailer that doesn't have a motor, that counts, right? A boat trailer counts along with the boat motor?
Anything that has a motor vehicle registration where you have to get a tag. That's what you're.
Would that include a boat mo, I don't have a boat, but I know you'd have to do the trailer, would you?
The trailer tag would. The motor, you're paying a separate motor craft license to the title bureau.
Okay. So that wouldn't be included?
That would not count.
Okay. I know this year, uh, we were talking about salt and everything and this year was a bad year. We used a lot, but I know the previous years, I don't even know if the salt.
Yeah, we didn't really use a whole lot.
Yeah, and it could have been used up this year. I don't know. So that's one of those things that, you know, it's an ongoing thing. You've got a budget for it, but you don't know how much it's gonna be.
Right.
You don't know how much you're gonna use, the same way with a lot of the other stuff. Now, uh, living in Weathered Oaks, like I said, I know, and I don't know Mr. Bennett when he drives around and sees, but I know the lower part of Weathered Oaks was blacktop. It's in good shape. And, uh, I know that gentleman brought it up before. And there's some places and like I said, some roads that I know is Mr. Maccabee said Morris Road. But there was nothing wrong with the bottom end of Weathered Oaks. I don't know. I don't wanna say peripheral treatment, but some things just doesn't make sense. That's all. So, and like these people were saying, you know, I'd like to see the bang for your buck and where it's coming from. So thank you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak before we close the public hearing? Astroud, would you like to come back up?
Barry Stroud, thirty-eight hundred Canal Road. Okay. I've just got questions on what is your general fund used for?
It can be used for anything. So, but in recent and past years, you were not able to use the general fund money for road projects. It wasn't until just recently that they changed the legislation where you could actually take money out of the general fund to pay for road um, projects. But general fund would be like to pay, obviously the trustee's salaries, my salary, the fiscal officer's salary, law director, um, workers comp, uh, repairs to this building, the utilities for this building. So anything that has to do with general administration is what it pays for.
Okay. And what about the RID fund, our money?
The residential, residential incentive district, that is for projects. Um, I know that we had, um, an opinion, I think years ago where we could use it for paving. Um, and that's what, it's, it's never been used before. This year will be our first year that we've ever used the RID to pay for, um, that paving.
So you could actually put that money into the general fund?
No. So that's the, the weird part about township fund accounting is think of it like a pie. So you have this pie and you have all these divisions in this pie and then you have toppings on the pie, but you can't share the toppings with different pieces of pie. So each piece of pie can only be used for its intended specific purpose. So if you have a police levy, that's a slice of the pie that can only be used to fund police. And the same thing for the road department, same thing for the fire department. Um, the only thing that is different is the general fund. The general fund can be transferred to any of those pieces. But the, all the other ones have to remain separate.
Okay. And then what about the tiffs?
The tiffs can be used for projects. So, and they're supposed to be related to the area where you did the tiff. So the Princeton Road Tiff, whatever parcels that we tiffed in that Princeton Road area, it's supposed to be for the benefit of that Tiff district. You can use it a stretch, like I've seen in my career, like you can stretch it and go out a mile. You know, what its intended purpose is. Say like you're paving roads in that general vicinity, but you can't, if you've got a Tiff district here, you can't use it for something over here. It's not, it's not for its intended purpose.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Other than maybe y'all need to take a cut in your pay. So there's more money. Just saying.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from the public? So, um, legally the, the trustees cannot vote on this until there is a second public hearing and it has to be more than three days from today, but less than ten days from today. So we will be having a motion later on the meeting to set that date when we'll be having that second hearing, when more public comments could be made and things like that. Would you like to add anything to that?
No, just that please remember to close the public hearing tonight.
Sure. Come on up. I'm sorry. I need you at the microphone for it to be recorded. So we can have these in the minutes. It's okay.
Prolong your guys' day. Charles Kirkpatrick again, six seven five three Weston Court. Is, uh, are these public hearings more of a pacifier for the township? Because if it's only you guys voting on it, you need the money, you're gonna do it. And next year you're gonna do the other five. I mean, common sense would tell you that. You know, that's gonna happen. So is that what this is? Because, you know, is it worth being here for? I mean, we could speak our mind or anything, but unless it changes the people here's opinion, then it's still gonna happen, correct?
Well, I don't wanna speak for any other trustee, but like we, it's important for us to get feedback from our community on these matters. And that's why we do have the public hearings, to get feedback from the public. And so I would think that if we didn't have the public meetings, there's no way possible that you could possibly persuade someone from changing their opinion. But I feel like my two colleagues here and myself, we take public input seriously and, but we also have to make the decision, what we feel we were elected to make the best decision that is best for Fairfield Township.
That I understand.
If we, we understand that it might be a burden for people and, and we would be also if we decide to vote on this at the next meeting, we would be imposing that tax on ourself as well. And we have to think, is it worth five dollars to maintain good roads to where you're not getting your suspension fixed on your car all the time? You're not replacing hubcaps that pop off because of all the puddles. So the general ma, the general maintenance of a car of our residents is also an important thing that we have to consider and a quality of life. You know, I mean, if you have, on the subdivisions, if many of our children are riding bicycles, do we want them going over, you know, big divots in the road and they fall and then there's a trip to emergency room and they have a broken bone. So how much is a trip to the hos- hospital for a, a parent? It's more than five dollars.
I understand. And I, and I understand Mr. Maccabee, it was a good point he made. There's only two ways. It's either this way or a tax levy. Like the lady out here said, tax levy is gonna fail.
Yeah, I don't think any, I don't think any of that.
Thing about it. And I understand that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll accept it when it comes in. Uh, we've been here, but just like your bottom line, there are better quality of life and property values. But if our property value goes up, so does our taxes. So, you know, that's the whole thing about it. So. So it's kind of a two edged sword.
Sure.
Thank you.
But to answer your question, I think it is important and I think that each of us will take the comments into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure. Yeah, please.
Judy Tipton, forty-one fifteen Schroeder Drive. If I understand what you were explaining, we actually have Butler County do our paving. Is that correct? we actually have Butler County do our paving. Is that correct?
Yes, they manage the program for us. We pay for it. The township pays for it. But we just, the county engineer kind of takes the lead on that project.
Okay. And the county engineer, they have an actual list every year of the roads that they're going to do.
Yes.
You can't call them up and say, hey, my street on Schroeder needs paved because it's got multiple cracks from concrete trucks when they build a two million dollar house. And so we can't say, hey, this road is really bad in the township. Can you please move this up on your schedule? Because they have schedules when they do these roads.
We send them the list.
Yeah, we send them the list.
Makes recommendations to us. I usually get out and try to write as many of those roads to agree or disagree with him. And then we talk about how much money we think we have to spend on them.
Right.
And then we send that list to the county. We pay our way. It's just like
I understand.
three for ten dollars or two for twelve. You know, when we pool our resources with the rest of the county, we get a better price on doing those roads. So that's, but we pay our way.
I'm not saying that.
Pay our way for all that we do.
That's not what I'm trying to say. No, I'm sorry.
But we send him the list.
Okay. But they make the schedules, what I'm trying to say. They make the schedule which road gets done when they get to it.
Well, we tell them what we want done in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And then it'll be up, really up to the contractor to say, we're coming, we're going to start in Westchester and work our way through. And if those have been around, you've seen them, they come and they grind the roads.
Right.
Okay, are they ever coming back? Well, they're doing the same thing. And then they'll work their way through and pave it and the other part.
But they actually pick the schedule themselves, what I'm trying to say.
Contractor usually sets the schedule.
Yeah, I know that for a fact because I know somebody that does that for the county. So they, they actually have a list of roads that they do, just like Tyler'sville was horrible for a long time. I mean, it was like downtown Baghdad. And, but it was where the county, because part of it was Hamilton, part of it was Fairfield. But they actually have a schedule that Mr. Greg does that for which roads are being done, which they have projected out.
Happen on the county road, that's right.
Right. So, and the township, even if we get this passed, like say my street looks awful, and I say, Joe, Shannon, Mr. Birdy, can you please have them, they can't do that. It's up to the county when they do.
No, we schedule that.
Right. And that's what I was talking about is there's a list, and I really think we probably need to update it and quantify it. But there's a list that has all of the township roads, and I believe it was graded based on the level of, you know, I know this isn't what it was, but A, B, C, D, whatever that was. And then every year, the roads that are kind of at the bottom are the ones that are like, oh, no, we need to, we need to address those. Okay? And then in time, everything kind of moves up. And I think that he, that Mr. Bennett has been kind of moving from a northerly fashion to a southern fashion to kind of get the roads paved and caught up. Our subdivision is kind of at the end of the hut. But that's, that's kind of what that plan is, is they look at, okay, what are the roads that really, really need looked at? What, and how bad are they? And when can we put them on? We do that every year. Okay? And then we take the list that we have and we say, okay, we've got, say, we've got five hundred thousand dollars to put towards paving this year. And Mr. Bennett pulls off those roads, and then we submit those to the county. The county sends those out to a bid for multiple companies. And then they come back and they're like, okay, well, it's X amount of dollars this year, and we've got you on the schedule. But we do, the engineer office gets it early, and we get that money, and then we, or they get the estimates for us, and then we put it in, and then we go with that. So everyone is trying to cost-cut and manage this as best we can. But that's kind of how that goes. So what I, what I would really like, and I think the administrator and Mr. Bennett were working on this, is getting that comprehensive road list together and saying, okay, here's where everything is. Here's the roads that really need it. And I'd even like to get that quantified so that we know how much it is. And then I'd like to quantify that based on the money that we know we're going to be getting from the standard funds that we regularly get money from. Okay? And then I'd like to understand if we, if we, if, you know, again, there's option one, which is do nothing, use the money that we currently have. Option two, do the five dollars, or option three, puts a levy on it. But I'd like to take that, those numbers, and whatever those options are, maybe all three, and put it up against the listing of all of our roads so that we have a better idea of what that paving plan is going forward. I think it's important to have that overall paving plan so that we can say, here's where it is, here's where we're going to get it caught up. And I would actually like to see that updated because we have, especially over the last five or six years, we've accelerated that paving plan. Because I think in the past, I want to say we were like at four hundred thousand dollars. We weren't at a whole lot. And I know once Ms. Lupense gets that data gathered, we'll have a better idea of what that's looked like, but we were at maybe four hundred thousand dollars. And every year, we've tried to do a little bit more to get things caught up because we know that there's roads with issues out there. So we've been trying to get that caught up. And maybe it's time we stop with the catch-up. And maybe it's time we just do the really critical ones. But I think having that paving plan is what is really going to help us get where we need. And, and maybe, maybe we pump the brakes a little bit. Maybe we don't do it this year. Maybe we look at doing it next year. But I'd really like to get that good grasp of what our actual, what is our total road situation? What's our paving plan? What's our money? And when will this get caught up?
I'm surprised it hasn't already been done, you know? The Bible says when you go to build a house, you count the cost. Why hasn't that already been done before the Pope's in? And Maria is correct. Belmont area has always been neglected. My church is there. And for once, they did the curb on Peter, and it's got a sign out there that says thanks to the county. But that's always been behind. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else would like to speak? Okay. At this time, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Schultz, would you call the role plays?
Trustee Birdy.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee.
Yes.
And that motion passes. So at this point, the public hearing of the the permissive license, motor license tax hearing is closed. We will continue on with our regular meeting. You're all welcome to stay. You're all welcome to leave. It's up to you, whatever you'd like to do.
Maybe before they do leave, maybe we ought to set the date for the next.
Sure. Well, that is a motion, but we can do that now. That's fine. I think Ms. Lupense maybe sent out some suggestions for some dates for next week for potential hearing date.
I really, before we do something like that, I really would like to see some numbers around what I just talked about previously. I'd like to get that perspective on what we've spent on what our critical roads are. I guess if we're, you know, A is great, B, C, D, F. But I'd like to get more of that data.
Okay. So then are you wanting to give Ms. Lupense some time to get that data to you before we have the meeting? I still think we need to set the meeting now. Like we need to set when that meeting will occur. Just ask for her to provide that data to us. Because we have to have the meeting before the ten days, which would be the twelfth. Which is.
So it's either going to be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week.
Yeah. It's going to be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week.
If we want to do option two or option three. If we want to do option one, where we kind of pump the brakes and look at the data and see what that tells us.
Well, I mean, we could still have the meeting and then vote not to put the tax on right now. Right? And then if we get the data that we get, we can always then have another public hearing to, we can start over with the first public hearing and the second public hearing.
Right.
If we were to vote no on the permissive tax.
Right.
And then get the data, then we'd have to come back, start over again with one public hearing. Then ten days, no more than ten days later, have a second public hearing. Right.
Yeah.
So would it make sense to go ahead and at least set that second date now, at least to have the meeting, and then have her, have Ms. Lupense provide that information to us?
If we, if we don't get it done by July first, it becomes January first, twenty-seven.
Yes.
To start collecting.
Right. One year without any additional time. So to me, you know, we ought to do the two public hearings. When the seventeenth comes, we vote up or down, whatever happens. At least we, we haven't done it by default.
Right.
Not having the second public hearing and not meeting the deadlines.
Right.
And I do want to hear what people think. There were a lot of questions tonight, but I really would like to hear what people think about this. And we have no problem answering the questions, but I, you know, what do we want to do? And I don't think it should, I want that, I want to know what people think we should do about this.
Okay. So any suggestions, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, when you'd like to have this meeting? When are you available?
I'm available all three, early, early.
I can do Tuesday evening.
Tuesday the tenth.
And then, of course.
Seven o'clock.
I'm not available next week, but I don't have to be, I can watch the public hearing because we're not voting on it. Right?
Right.
So I don't have to be here for the public hearing since I will be out of town. But I think it's important to get that date set. And of course, I could watch the stream and take in all the comments and maybe get the minutes from the comments as well before we vote on it on the seventeenth. Okay. So you want to set it for, that was, I'm sorry, the
It's the tenth.
The tenth?
Uh huh.
And what time would you like to have?
Do seven.
Can do seven.
So I don't have to run through any red lights getting here.
Well, good thing you have good roads to go quickly on, right? Okay, so what I'm hearing is I will move to set, schedule the second public hearing for the permissive motor vehicle license tax for Tuesday, June tenth at seven PM, right here at the Fairfield Township Administration Building. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments? Could you call the role plays?
Trustee Birdy.
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
And that motion is adopted. So we will have the second meeting here at seven PM on Tuesday, June the tenth. Tell all your friends, we have plenty of room for them to come in and speak how they would like us to move forward.
That sets us up to vote on it on the seventeenth, June seventeenth. We're meeting at seven. So we've got a bunch of stuff that night, right? Our meeting here is at seven o'clock.
Yes.
Cutting the ribbon at the park in Five Points at six-thirty, something like that. And then we meet here on the seventeenth at seven o'clock. And that's when we expect to be voting on the license fee.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll have no presentations. We have no old business. Again, thank you all very much for coming out this evening. You're welcome to stay if you prefer. Well, one item we have for board discussion is how we're going to save the township money on our health insurance. Right? Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So Ms. Lupense? Let's just wait a couple of minutes while the crowd.
Okay.
Will you just give us a bit of cheese? Somebody's got to do it. Guess me if you can. You haven't made a couple of years.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Lupense, health insurance options.
Okay, so every year, we have our health insurance renewal. This year is different because we typically will renew our health insurance as of August first. But when we joined the Anthem Network last year, we knew that we were going to have to increase our renewal date to the July first date because that is when they do the Anthem ERC renewals. So it does seem scrunch this year, and I apologize for the time crunch. The reason I wanted you guys to talk about it is because June first is actually open enrollment. And now is the time for all of our employees to change their what they have with us. They can add people, delete people. It's, you don't have to have a qualifying event because it's automatic open enrollment. The problem becomes is we use ADP to enroll everyone in our benefits. And so when we opened open enrollment yesterday, we have to have something in ADP to tell people what to pick from. And if we don't have anything in ADP to tell, then it becomes helter-skelter. So what we did is we, we got our renewal rates at the end of, or end of April, and we were going to get a four point five percent increase. Now, that is not a hateful number. But I immediately asked the carrier to do better. I said, four point five three is not good enough. You know, we're faced with what we're faced with. We need to figure out a way to either get it down low or do something different. So when they approached the markets, they looked at all of these different carriers. I think I gave you guys a copy of all this. But these are the different carriers that they approached, and you can see like which ones were quoted, which ones were declined. But I, you know, they do go out and market other carriers for, to try to get us good renewal rates. So if you look at the medical current and renewal plan options, so Anthem is the PPO option number seven with RX option T two. That is what we currently have. So you can see our current rate is ninety-seven thousand dollars a month. And then with the renewal, we will be going to a hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars a month. And you can see the totals, we're at one point one million and one point two million with the renewal. So our, you know, our annual plan is obviously the fifteen hundred, the three thousand for the deductibles. You can see that once you reach your deductible, it's an eighty-twenty split, and I don't know if anybody realizes that, but once you get to your deductible, you're, the Anthem is paying eighty percent, and we're, the employees are paying twenty percent of whatever else the cost may be. And then obviously, we have our prescription drug plan. So what she did is she looked at Aetna. So we have an eleven point seven increase and a thirty-two point six percent increase, which we chose to decline. And then we also, she also compared us to Crumdale, which I've, I've never heard of them. But they were a fourteen point two percent increase and a nine point four, depending on which plan. The one that did look viable was United Healthcare. So we're able to save five percent with United Healthcare. But if you notice, this is going back to the old way of doing things. So this is where you actually go back to co-pays versus having a deductible, but you cannot go out of network. So if your doctor is out of network, you're paying, I think it is annual out-of-pocket, you could be paying up to ten thousand dollars a person if you go out of network. So there's no longer co-pays. You're just paying straight. So I didn't think that would probably be a viable option. Sidecar, I've never heard of them, but it's a negative eight point eight percent. It would be a cost savings. Let's see. Looks like you have a fifteen hundred and a three thousand dollar deductible. Annual out-of-pocket's the same. It's a hundred percent coverage after you reach the deductible. Routine preventative care is covered in full. So, I mean, I guess that would be a viable option, but I don't know anything about sidecar. The only other options that I asked to look at was, I thought maybe it might be a good time to visit self-funding. So the way self-funding works is that you would take, so instead of paying a million dollars to Anthem, we would pay a million dollars to ourselves. So we would take the premiums, if we did a self-funding plan, we could potentially save money. And instead of paying Anthem, we would pay ourselves. So we would put money in a separate account. So we take that a hundred and, a hundred thousand, and we put it in the account, and then we use that money to pay claims ourselves. So we would hire a third-party administrator, and then that administrator would pay claims on a weekly basis for us. I think on this self-funding proposal from Capstone, from Roundstone Captive, it looks like the annual maximum claims would be 763,000. The annual expected claims would be 610,000. So then we would have stop gas, stop gap insurance that we would have to buy. But you could see that they're guessing that we're going to spend around a million dollars, but if we have a really good year, we could spend less than that. So that's money that we could keep in our account that we would get the interest on, and we're not paying that 25% right off the bat to Anthem as profit. I don't know, I mean, obviously, we're going to have some good years, we're going to have some bad years. So the good thing to do is to keep that money in an account, and then you keep it in case you have a bad year. But if you do have a couple of claims that are over that $60,000 stop gap, then you're buying reinsurance so, from another company that would pay that claim after the 60,000.
So quick question, if we did do that, does it matter which carrier you use? Can you use any of the?
You can choose any third-party administrator you use, and they use a network.
No, like Anthem, like say we wanted to stay with Anthem, and then we self-insure.
We would have to find a carrier, a third-party administrator that uses the Anthem Network.
Okay.
So we did look at one through another broker, and they, they recommended Medben, and their network is Medical Mutual of Ohio.
So does that mean we'd have to, instead of going with Anthem, we'd go with Medical Mutual?
Yeah, we would go with Medben, but they use the Medical Mutual of Ohio's network. So you would have to stay within their network, or if you go out of network, then it's like another cost. But we were trying to get it so where it was the same benefits as Anthem, but we would have to switch brokers. And I didn't know if switching brokers and switching insurance all at the same time, if that would cause lots of upheaval with the employees? Or should we just make that decision to save money? Because we could save, we could save up to 14% if we switched to self-insurance.
So you're wanting to go to self-insurance in Medical Mutual?
It would be self-insurance through Medben, and we would have to switch brokers. Or if we use Assured Partners, they've provided one that's called Roundstone Captive, and it looks like it uses the Cigna network. Let's see, so their specific, so their stop gap is 50,000. So then we would buy reinsurance through whatever carrier that they recommend. And then, so we would pay up to 50,000 for a claim, up to, like, for a person. And then anything over 50,000 would be covered by that additional carrier.
One for self-insure for the Anthem Network option.
Okay, so the options are?
We could stay with Anthem because Anthem did come back with a 0% increase after we threatened to leave.
Okay, good.
So we can do that. Or we could do the United Healthcare and save 5% and still stay fully insured. Or we could do the self-insurance, and if we switched carriers, we could save 14% and then pay ourselves. But I just didn't know, I really didn't know, like, where to draw the line with how much do you change? I know I'm trying to save money, and we're trying to save money, but at the same time, I wasn't sure what level to upset the apple cart.
Well, just to be clear, Anthem co-pays don't count towards your deductible. Everybody, anybody who's used has found that out. And if you go to somebody outside of the network and they order lab work, and then you go to somebody in the network, it's still not covered because you have a doctor that was not in the network. So it'd be nice if we had some real coverage at a fair price. You know, of course, if we could save some money, that'd be great. Where did Sidecar come in on, on the price? Where did they come in as far as?
Yeah, it was going to be a negative 8.8% savings, or 8.8% savings. So it would drop our premiums down to $1,067,505, or $88,000 a month. It says Sidecar Health. I've never heard of them before. I don't know anything about them.
So that would save us 8% or United Healthcare would save us 5%?
Yes.
United Healthcare.
With United Healthcare, you go back to co-pays and you can't go out of network.
Well, that's what I just said about Anthem.
Yeah.
You pay co-pays, and if you go outside of network, you're on your own.
Right.
So to me, we save 5%. And once you pass the, uh, once you're past your, your deductible, it's 100% pay if I'm reading it right.
Well, there's no deductible here. It says zero for deductible, but your annual out-of-pocket costs are 5,000 and 10,000.
Oh, okay.
Versus the 3,876,000?
Uh, I think ours.
With 100% after?
Yeah.
After, after your deductible, it's 100%?
Yeah, it does say that. Co-insurance, 100%. And I wanted to get your all's thoughts on?
Did you meet with the bargaining units and what?
Yes.
What did they weigh in on?
They were, they were not happy.
Was it the bargaining unit or the department head?
It was, no, it was everybody. It was department heads and bargaining unit people. So they, they.
What were they not happy about? What were their?
They prefer to stay with Anthem. I think it's the fear of the unknown.
Fear of the unknown. And what we do know is we paid Anthem a lot of money. They tried to get us to pay even more money. And then when they said, we said, we're leaving, then they.
Yeah, they counted it zero.
Minus 8%, we will consider staying. The other thing I'd like to see us do, I mean, I don't know. I'd like to see us get back on a calendar year. Just makes everything a little simpler.
Well, if we stay with Anthem and the ERC, that will never happen because their plan year is July 1st.
We just joined them last year, and again, I don't know. It'd be interesting to have that survey of the employees and see if they really liked it or what. And I say this, if we're stuck with Anthem this year or this month, I say we're, we're aggressive about finding somebody September 1, October 1, January 1.
That's fine with me.
We're not on the hook for paying them in advance.
That's fine with me. If you guys want to stay with Anthem and just keep it simple. Well, I'm just saying, if you would like to keep it simple, and then you task us with that and just say, okay, in the next six months, maybe we switch, maybe we switch brokers, and then we get really aggressive about what we want to do. I'm fine with that.
We can use as many brokers as we need to get what we need.
Well, I think we found a good broker. We just, it's, we would need to change it all.
Online, it says that Sidecar has no network. You could use any provider.
So is it like one of those where they pay, like the market rate?
It says members use a provided debit card linked to Sidecar Claims Department to pay for services and then submit itemized bills. And the only drawbacks I'm reading is there is no out-of-pocket max. That could be maybe an issue. But we could learn more.
On the sheet, it shows some.
It does, okay.
It shows 1,500 and, 1,500 and 3,000 is what it shows.
I think we should, I mean, if we're going to look into it, then we could learn more before we make the decision, but.
I kind of like that idea. I really liked what you said a moment ago about maybe for the moment, we have to do this, but maybe we aggressively look at some other options.
Yeah.
I thought that was sensible.
Okay.
And I'm certainly not opposed to self-funding.
I just think, why pay them? Why pay them 25% profit? I mean, why not pay ourselves? And then we would get, we would get the interest on the money we get to keep.
You know, that's a road crew worker, right? So I think we're aggressive about that. Should we do it now or do it in September 1?
I've worked for places that have had it before. And one of the components that we did is that we did a, and I don't know if this is something we can do here or not, but they did aggressive wellness type things. And then they did, like, we used to do our health fair, but they did aggressive wellness things. And then based on, like, if the claims were better than expected, there was actually a profit sharing that went to employees. I don't know if we can do that legally, if that's good, holy and wholesome here. But it really incented people to, hey, you know, can I go with the generic instead of the name brand? Can I stay in what network instead of out of network? Whatever those choices are, because there was that component on the end of getting some sort of rebate at the end of the year. So that's, that was one. And I don't know if that's legal.
We may not be able to give them a rebate, but I bet we could lower their premiums the following year.
Maybe lower the premiums, or maybe like based on if we have very good claims in 2020, whatever that calendar year is, maybe that rolls into reduced premiums for the following year, something like that.
Or we'll have more money and the coffers to pay salaries.
Yeah.
And there won't be cuts. If it, all that rolls into it. If they can also help us, like, we're trying to make cuts, and if we can get some help from the employees as well, that might help.
Versus them paying more, because that's the only other option.
Right.
Yeah.
It's never going to stop.
A little bit goes to them, but eventually more has got to go to them.
And they're going to continue to rise no matter what.
Oh, yeah. And that's what I tried to explain to everybody, like, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it as, I'm trying to save the township money, but in me doing that, you're going to save money, but, you know.
Well, I like that idea of maybe just for the moment, sticking with this. And I like the thoughts on maybe on, let's find another, there's a better way.
No, you can get out of it at any time, yeah.
So if we stay with it for the meantime, employees have to do something if they don't want to make a change?
Usually, we do the opt-out, like, you don't have to do anything if you don't change.
Yeah. If you don't change. Right, but if you want to add somebody that was not on there before, then this is the month that you do that, you make a change.
Because we're really on a crunch right now. I don't know if we have much choice in this day, but
Yeah, that's why.
I would like to see other options.
Yeah, that's why later on in the thing, I recommended just staying with Anthem for the time being. And then we just get a committee together and we just explore what options we can do. If you guys are okay with that.
Okay. So there's a resolution 2589 coming up to let the administrator, authorize any administrator to sign a contract with Anthem. So that will be coming up. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Lepensky? I'm assuming since everyone left, there will not be communication for this portion. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, agenda. And we do have a couple of things, okay. So all items under the consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for the removal of any item. Items removed for a separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. At this time, I move to adopt our consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Schultz, will you call the rule, please?
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee McAbby.
Yep.
And that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the Fiscal Officer's Report. Ms. Schultz, anything?
I do not have anything. I'll have numbers from May at the next meeting.
Great. Administrator's report, Ms. Lepensky?
So under resolutions, we have resolution number 25-89, authorizing the administrator to sign a contract with Anthem as provider for healthcare benefits.
Let's go adopt.
Second, any questions or comments?
I think you understand them.
Direction.
Want something better.
Yep, got it.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, call the rule, please.
Trustee McAbby.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-90 is a resolution revising resolution 25-75, authorizing the Fairfield Township Administrator execute all necessary documents to renew the township's coverage with O-Tarma through Risk Source Theaters Insurance Agency at a cost of $224,899, effective June 1, 2025 through May 31, 2026. So I apologize, but at the last meeting, I did not have time to allocate the different properties that we have. And now that I have a better understanding of what properties we own and what cars we have, based on the schedule that we have, we had to revise the allocations for each different department. So it was not what was listed in the last resolution. So if you look at the purchase order that's attached, these are all the correct amounts now. And then what I did is I took all of our risk and put it into one spreadsheet based on the different disciplines. Some of it is divided out by percentage. Some of it is actually listed as police. So this little tab that I have here, this little spreadsheet where it says 2025 Risk Insurance, it'll actually say like wrongful acts, excess, law enforcement operation. So obviously, you know, there are some things that are going to get assigned to police, some things that are going to get assigned to fire, some things to roads, and then some things to general, and then some of the stuff we split. So that's what all of that is. And then underneath that is all of the liability insurance. So it's automobile, it's the physical part, the property part. That's all divided out depending on the number of vehicles. So if you look at the second spreadsheet, it's, one is actual property on the very back one. And then the one in the middle is all the vehicles that we own. So I divided all of those out depending on the type of department so that we could get a better handle on who's supposed to be paying for what out of what fund. So that's why I needed you guys to do a revision so that we get it right.
So quick thing on, is this something that we have to revise every year as far as inventory?
No, because now I have a spreadsheet, and now I can just, next time we get the little sheet that we get that has all, I can just input the numbers and it'll change my spreadsheet.
Okay, because I was just going to say that might be something cool to put on the.
Oh, the list.
Calendar?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we would want to put the renewal on the calendar. So you might, you could have that.
So maybe like that's on the calendar, and then maybe there's also, I don't know what, April, March, something like that.
Okay.
That says, oh, we need to update
Yeah.
our inventory.
Okay.
Would that be something to add to the March? Maybe?
Probably April.
Because we won't have the list till April.
They have to confirm it anyway, but you need to make changes if cars come in.
Yes, and that was one thing about our list. Our list was about five years out of date. So the problem is, is I had to go off the list that we currently have, which is not correct. I am working with O-Tarma and revising and updating our list. And we may have to make changes and make additional payments because there's a lot of police cars that were not on the list. There was fire trucks that were included on the list that we no longer have. Some public work stuff that was on there that we no longer have. So it'll be a loss, but gain.
Okay, so maybe that's just something, and I agree with Trustee McAbby, that's something that we should always keep in the back of our mind. But maybe we also do that annual, in April, we do our double check and just say to ourselves, okay, have we done this yet?
Okay, but the other reason too is the police department didn't have enough money in their, in their levy fund. So we had to take the lion's share of their money out of the general fund. And then.
Can we do it in advance?
No, because they can't pay it back.
Pay it back in September.
They won't be able to, Joe, they won't be able to pay it back.
They'll still be in the negative.
They're still in the, yeah.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 25-90.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Did you update the age of the reformist?
Yes, yeah, so that'll be on the list too.
I should lower the price for the insurance.
I hope.
Ms. Schultz, will you call the rule, please?
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee McAbby.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Committee reports, I don't know that we really need. Committee reports, I don't know that we really need to have committee reports tonight. So we will move on to the board member comments. Trustee Maccabee, any comments tonight?
I'd just like to appreciate the administrator doing all that, cleaning it up, cleaning up a mess, and getting it all straightforward.
Well said. Trustee Harkemaier?
Nope.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's great seeing a full house of people being actively involved in government. You know, sometimes we feel like we're in a bubble, in a cloud, that we're talking to the camera, but it's good to have residents come out and speak their mind, and hopefully we pass a little bit of understanding on to the residents that they understand that there's just not a money tree out there that we can just shake in Hero's Park and pay for things, that if we want to take care of things, there are expenditures that need to take place. And we have to figure, as elected officials, we have to figure out how to find that revenue. So thank you all for coming out tonight and expressing your opinion. Okay. Announcements. Our next permissive motor vehicle license public hearing, number two, will be June 10th, right here at the Administration Building at 7:00 PM. Fairfield Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting is Tuesday, June 17th at 7:00 PM, following the ribbon cutting at the Pocket Park. The tax budget hearing will take place at that township, during the trustee meeting at 7:10, right here at the Administration Building on Tuesday, June 17th. And the Juneteenth holiday is Thursday, June 19, 2025. All the township buildings will be closed. At this time, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Burden.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee.
Yes.
And that motion is passed. We adjourn at 8:22 PM.
So for paving, Shannon, you just want a list of what we paved, or do you want a list of roads that we paved, and each year we paved it in the amount?